Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's study session. It's six o'clock, so we'll get started. Mr. Rains, you want to set this up, or Scott, you're gonna just take over?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, members of the council. We're bringing to you this evening for presentation, a package of proposed amendments to the city's personnel policy. Of course, the personnel policy is a document that brings structure to our relationship to our employees, and contains all of the basics that are necessary to be a responsible municipal employer in the state of Arizona. And so what I've done is I've prepared a highlight summary sheet for you, and I'm gonna be working from that, although you have the details. And as you review the details, you know that the deletions were struck through, and the additional language is underlined. So we'll just go through the list, and stop me at any time if you have any questions along the way. The first item for consideration, the first item for presentation this evening, is probably one of the major ones, and these are the highlights, not every one that's in the package. And that is proposed amendments to the city's employee appeal process. Our policy says that if we deal with an employee in a punitive way that involve demotion, suspension, or dismissal, those employees have what we call internal appeal rights, and they have the ability to file an appeal, and have their appeal heard before right now between our, before our Personnel Advisory Board. Personnel Advisory Board has been around for a long time, and is made up of five citizens appointed by the mayor and council, like many other boards and commissions, and they in turn elect a chair to guide the group. I should have noted that the last time we brought policy amendments to you was three years ago. So this isn't something we do with a lot of frequency, and there's a lot of reasons for that. But the Personnel Advisory Board has been around for a long time, and the good news is that I think 2017 was probably the last appeal that was filed, and the last time the Personnel Advisory Board met together. So that's a really good thing. But what happens is, under our current system, is that the employee or his or her representative comes before the board, present their case, the city presents his case, the board deliberates, and then they provide a recommendation back to the city manager. Ours is a circular system, like a lot of them are, and it's been litigated in Arizona. So the final authority on all these matters rests with the city manager. We're proposing in this policy amendment to replace the Personnel Advisory Board model with what's called a hearing officer model. And it's very common around the state of Arizona, particularly in today's time when it's really rare for an employee to present his or her appeal on their own, rather has an attorney that does that, and the city is represented by an attorney. And sometimes it's very difficult to ask a citizen advisory board and an elected chair to handle the dynamics of this quasi judicial forum to manage employee, to manage the attorneys that are there. And so the hearing officer model basically says that we would appoint, with each appeal that comes forward, we would appoint a hearing officer, an administrative law judge, if you will. And these hearing officers are attorneys, many of them are retired judges. And there's actually a group that are submitted proposals under the state procurement contract that we could choose from. And there's lots of others that do these things all around the Phoenix area and around the state of Arizona. And so the hearing officer then would preside at the hearing, and be able to manage all of that, and hear the evidence that's presented. And the hearing officer then in turn would render a recommendation back to the city manager. Obviously, the strength of our process and anyone like this is that I don't recall that there's ever been a time when the city manager didn't accept and affirm the findings of the appeal, the appeal board or the Personnel Advisory Board. And so we're putting an extra safeguard. And our proposal says that in order to make sure that we're as fair or perceived as fair as possible, when we appoint a hearing officer, we give the appealing employee, his representative, the opportunity to have one strike. They decide they didn't like that hearing officer, they could strike that hearing officer, another one would be appointed. And so that's one of the largest things here. And having been through the process with a hearing officer and with a Personnel Advisory Board, having a judge, if you will, an attorney judge, listen to the case, the facts of the case, manage the courtroom, as it were, the proceedings in the hearing, and then to be able to write a concise and appropriate decision is a pretty important thing, and certainly the hearing officer model works really well at that.
Would there be an appellate process after he comes to a conclusion that would go to the city manager? How would that work?
The city manager is the final authority at the end of the day. So the city manager receives the record of the hearing and reviews that, and then will render his decision, and his decision is final. Now, having said that, that's, this is our internal appeal process, if you will. This is ours of the city. An employee has the opportunity to pursue his or her case in the court system, and with the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission or the State Civil Rights Board, if that was something that they wanted to do. But our system is circular, and then the recommendation comes back to the manager.
Scott, was there any input solicited or received from employee groups and associations?
This is our proposal that we're bringing to you this evening. We made a presentation before the Employee Engagement Group. But no, I mean typically we don't go out and put these things to a vote among our employee population.
Sure.
It's our responsibility to manage these things and to bring these proposals before you this evening.
Okay.
The next item that's on our highlight sheet there is under our fair employment process. This simply reflects what the law of the land is today. The U.S. Supreme Court issued a decision last year, a year before last, basically including sexual orientation and gender identity as protected groups under the law. And so we're simply amending our policy to reflect what the Supreme Court has said is the law of the land. The third item is residency requirement, and you may or may not know that several years back, the Arizona Legislature passed a bill that said a municipality or governmental entity cannot enforce any residency requirements on uniform police and fire, except at the highest levels of the organization. And so our policy is not valid in this area, it's preempted by state law. And so we're bringing a policy proposal that basically says, you know, if it's, if those uniformed public safety employees don't have to follow a residency policy, then none of our employees, other employees should, let's level the playing field. And so this policy basically takes our residency policy in that direction, and then leaves with the city manager the ability to individually or sometimes collectively make decisions in relationship to imposing residence requirements. We could not ever do that with, again, uniformed police and fire up to the executive level. But if there was some reason that might come along, and we don't know what that would be today, that there was response time that was important, the city manager could then do that. And particularly with executive leadership team, with his department directors, those are issues of negotiation, one of the issues of negotiation in relationship to coming to work. And so the policy proposal says that we're leveling the playing field, and we're removing the current residency requirement for all city employees, except as might be dictated by the city manager.
So Scott, in the case of like the police, we can't require them to live in the city, but we also don't have to let them take their vehicle home, correct?
We have the ability to, as far as the take-home program, that's totally ours.
Okay.
And we can set whatever standards that is very uncommon to...
We require those to stay in the city, right? Okay.
Yeah.
That was my only question.
You're in the city of Casa Grande Police Car up in Glendale or wherever, so that's our residency proposal to you.
Scott, so you're saying we, this is something we have to do?
No, I'm not.
Okay. So I guess I'm confused then. So we, I mean if we don't, if we don't have to say that this is a, we don't have to make that a residency requirement, then you're just making the recommendation that we do?
The proposal recognizes that you may not impose any residency requirement on police officers, firefighters, and what have you. And it seems, it seems to us, it seems to me, that if the state legislature has seen it appropriate to remove that from those folks, those of our employees, they're usurping local control on that issue, then we should apply it across the board to our sanitation drivers, and our parks maintenance workers, and our secretaries. But this is a proposal, there's nothing mandatory here. You can preserve this residency requirement for all other people, if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay?
Scott, just getting back to the appeal process, somebody that's unhappy with whatever Larry's decision is, can they go to court? You know, is that available to them, or?
Yeah, the question is the nature of the appeal, and the basis that the employee feels that he or she was not, was not dealt with appropriately. Always have the ability to pursue that, to pursue that in court, yeah. So the next item is our nepotism policy, and a couple of things here. Not, a lot of people know that there's a nepotism policy that's imposed on us through state law. And so we incorporate by reference the provisions of that policy. We're also freshening our policy up. We define relative one-time in our policy, and we apply it across the board for our bereavement leave and other kinds of issues. We're a little bit behind times, and so this proposal basically wants to recognize relationships that are not spousal, but are similarly close. And so we know, we recognize the situation, if somebody is in a committed relationship over a long period of time, that mirrors that kind of a close relationship. And so our nepotism provisions should apply there as well, because of the issue of fairness and all things related to assignments and pay and all those kinds of things. So it just freshens up our nepotism policy a little bit. The next item speaks to the issue of recording. This is a new policy for us, and it, we know that in Arizona, we're a one-party state. So anybody can record any conversation, as long as there's one party that knows it's being recorded. Occasionally, things will come up in the normal course and scope of things that it's really not a good idea to not have both parties knowledgeable about this, particularly in what we do. And so this basically imposes a restriction against an employee while at work, while on duty, in the normal course and scope of their employment, from recording someone else without their knowledge, except as may be approved by the city manager. And this is one of the policies that we're augmenting with an administrative directive. And very often, what we have is we have the bare bones of it in our personnel policy, and then we flesh that out in administrative directive. And so we work with the city, the city department directors and the city attorney to craft an administrative directive that speaks to all of the things that are coming to your mind right now. Police investigations, court, this meeting, and all those kinds of issues. And so we really work that policy over to make sure that we take into account all of the things that we would normally encounter, our employees would normally encounter. What it would prohibit is for somebody coming in, an employee coming in to meet with the city manager with a recorder in his or her pocket, without any knowledge of the city manager, and doing that, doing that recording. So it's something different from us, from what we've had in the past, we haven't had one in the past, but we think it makes sense for us in the long run, and I've been in some circumstances where it was kind of a big deal at the end of the day. The next one involves employee alcohol and drug testing. We've had a policy for a very long time in our city risk management manual about drug and alcohol testing, the things that we can do. And particularly, it focuses on those employees that drive for us and are required to have a commercial driver's license. That's federal law, and we have to test half of the total pool every year for drugs, and half of that half for both drugs and alcohol. What really brought this to the forefront for us and many others is the decriminalization of recreational marijuana in the state of Arizona. And so everybody's kind of made their way back to their policies to try to figure this out. So this will be the first time that we actually have a policy concerning drug and alcohol testing in the personnel policy, and this is another one of those that we're augmenting with an administrative directive. We had a lot of conversation about this, about what we, how we can do what we need to do, and yet respect people's rights, if you will, because recreational use of marijuana is not against the law in Arizona any longer. And so we've crafted an administrative policy that talks specifically, some concerns about post-accident testing, for example. But we set a standard that's very similar to the federal standard. There has to be disabled vehicles, injuries, fatalities, things like that, in order for there to even be a chance of that. And as normal, we count on our officers, or those law enforcement officers who are on the scene, to make the judgment they're always going to be making about impairment. And so we worked this thing over two, three different incarnations. And so we're fairly satisfied that we have one right now that's going to work for us. But because this is new territory in relationship to recreational use of marijuana, we're gonna be ready to make some changes if we need to down the road.
Is there a level of, that they can test, you can use so much marijuana, like alcohol, but if you use too much and you're not a responsible driving, or those type of things?
I'm gonna ask the city attorney, if you'd allow me, Mr. Powell, because he deals with this issue in city court all the time.
If I can get my microphone on, there we go. Mr. Powell, Ms. Mayor, and Mr. Powell, there's really not, right now, a federally or even state-recognized standard as far as a certain level of THC. And the particular issue that we run into has to do with the manner of testing. So there are ways that you can look at active THC in the bloodstream when you do blood testing. And so that's what we do, for example, when we deal with DUI law, at least we have in the past. The problem is that the urinalysis that we normally do can't differentiate between the active and the inactive metabolites. So that's, you can't really tell whether the use was recent or otherwise. So what we do is, we do have, and Mr. Barber can tell you, the ability to test via reasonable suspicion, just like we do with alcohol, if you see people who show signs of impairment, and we will be training our supervisors to recognize what those are. We have the ability, retain the ability to test for use of marijuana in those circumstances. But we're not gonna be doing it in pre-employment testing for most positions, because if they used it 30 days prior, you know, legal use, just like if they had had a drink 30 days before. So that's, we're not doing that, because you can't differentiate on whether it's active or inactive metabolites.
Scott, just a follow-up question, and I appreciate you answering all my questions this morning, you and Larry. But on this, I thought of one other thing, based on what we have before us. Was there any feedback from league of cities and towns, what other, you know, areas was doing in this?
There is a listserv out there for HR directors that puts some of this stuff out. But the league did not weigh in on this for this, in this particular area that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, you had a question?
Yeah, Scott, as part of the policy on a council member or director, the Pinnell County Sheriff would do that investigation for suspected drug or alcohol use?
I think that any investigation that involves our police department would be taken, would be done by another agency. By and large, the things that we would encounter with our other employees, would there be no prohibition against the city police department doing that? And we have, in fact, a couple of times have done that. We kind of rely on their, you know, evaluating the specific circumstances, whether there's any conflict or not. But with a normal employee outside of the police department, I don't think there's any conflict that would create a situation where some outside agency would have to come in. And very often, it's very difficult for them to be able to respond in a timely way.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Scott. Thank you.
Okay. The next involves employee probation, and as it stands right now, all of our new employees serve a probationary period. Most of our employees serve a six-month probationary or trial period. Particularly in police and fire, those employees who involved in academy work or what have you serve a 12-month probationary period. And when someone is confirmed to regular status, presuming they are, then they receive due process rights. In other words, at that point in time, they're deemed to have property rights interest in their job. Our personnel policy currently basically says that if an employee is promoted or transferred, and they're unsuccessful in that new position, they have the ability, if available, to move to, back to their old position, if it's still there, or to be handled as otherwise provided in the policy. Very practically speaking, if an employee has been promoted or transferred, and the position's been backfilled, and there's no other place to put the employee, then termination very well may be what takes place. We do a lot of work making sure that we promote our employees that we believe are gonna be successful. We encourage our supervisors to always do our part in helping all of our employees, whether brand-new or transfer, to be successful. This policy provision proposes to say that when you promote, or transfer, or demote, you're really in a new position, and therefore, you're going to be going back into probation like a new employee. So the technical differentiation between what the first scenario I explained, but it is a change. But it's not something that's unusual in city government. So employees have due process rights once they pass initial probation. And if they, this proposal says if they promote, or transfer, or demote, then they would return to that original status for the duration of that, which typically is going to be six months. There's never a promotional process that requires one year, except if somebody might, for example, be going from the civilian ranks to the uniform ranks, and they'd be going into academy. So that's this proposal, and it is, it is a change.
Anybody have any questions on that?
I guess.
Mr. Powell?
The same question I've been asking on several of them. What, if somebody's terminated with no fault of their own, because of the circumstances, what do you do then? They could, they could go to sue the city, or how does that work?
To specific, your specific question, Councilmember Powell, if someone is terminated through no fault of their own, that's typically going to be a reduction in force. I can't remember a circumstance where there was some other kind of termination that was, that was not for cause. As a matter of fact, depending on the department or the classification of the employee, we have a for-cause burden, if you will. So, you know, it's a situation where we thought enough of an employee to promote, you know, we're going to, and for some reason, it just wasn't successful. You know, we're gonna try to place that employee. And particularly, when we have somebody in some of our departments where there's not a lot of promotional opportunities, and they've been with us for a long period of time, and one comes up. They've been with us a long time, we think they're gonna make it, but for some reason, they don't. You know, we're gonna really try to find a place to put them. And occasionally, occasionally, we've got really unusual and unique circumstances. I've been in a situation before where the city managers allowed the department to run long, if you will, to run with an extra employee, because we knew somebody was leaving by retirement or what have you, so that we didn't have to cut that employee loose. So we really do try to do everything we can to make everything go well. So from a, I just don't terminate employees without cause.
We do that now, don't we, with the police department? Don't we do that now, where we allow them to have extra, like in the academy? Because we know somebody's gonna retire?
Ms. Mayor, it's a bit of a different circumstance, because what Mr. Barber is reporting today is really more focused on a promotional opportunity. But yes, we're ultimately allowing for employees, for additional bodies, if you will, so that we can stay ahead of the academy situation, yes.
That's, that's the other way around, that's not, but, you know, so it really is very efficient. And I think during our budget session last week, in all of my years, I don't think that the department, the police department has ever been so consistently staffed well, as is in the last year and a half when I've been here. So kudos to those folks. And then the last item involves our PTO and our sick leave buyback program. We've had this program for years and years and years. We had a the sick leave program, and then we transitioned to PTO. And we allow employees to redeem, or to sell back, unused accrued leave time every year. Last year, we became aware of our need to adjust our policy so that we don't run afoul of some provisions of the IRS code. And so what we're doing in the personnel policy is we're taking out all of the specifics that will allow us to craft the policy, to continue to do it, but craft it outside of the policy. It's a policy proposal says we're gonna continue to do it, as outlined by the city manager each year. So we're gonna make a couple of adjustments, and we have a lot of time to let our employees know that. Typically, what we've done is we've used, gone through the end of the calendar year, and then paid it out in January, and there's some technical things with the IRS regs. We're going to have to change that a little bit and do payout later in the year. So, but the policy amendment is necessary to get the specifics. You will do, we're doing this to allow us to comply. Those are the highlights. Do I stand to answer any questions, or?
Anyone have any questions? I think they kind of asked them as you went along, so.
Could you start from the beginning again? No.
So will we be voting on this at a future meeting?
Thank you, and I was about to say that. It's our intent to bring the policy back to you, to bring these back to you next month for approval.
Okay.
In the month of June, in the month of June.
Will the employees be made aware of this?
We've, we've reviewed it with the EEG, our department directors have had copies of it. But we would not typically send these out to our employees in advance of your action. But we will be making sure that our employees know about it afterwards. For example, on the drug and alcohol testing, we have to train our supervisors that deal with CDLs, and we have to train them now. We're gonna make sure that we reach out to all of our supervisors after the policy is, presuming the policy is passed, and give them the basic reasonable suspicion training, so that they're better able to recognize the signs of impairment in the workplace. So there's some things we're gonna need to do in terms of training after, after adoption.
Yeah, typically, typically, a employee policy is set by management, and then given to the employees. I mean, you might want some input, but in general, it's, it's a management decision, and I think that's what we're here for.
And the internal, internally, do all employees, after everything's voted on though, all of them receive it internally, all the updates, so that, and it's their responsibility to read an update?
We will be developing information things to send out to employees. We hope our EEG is the, is the, you know, stands between the departments and management. But we're gonna try to get that information out. Some of these are not impactful, really, on the day-to-day operation, but some of them are. And we'll make sure that that information gets out, gets out to our employees. And again, this is, these are policies, and we bring them to you for approval. The administrative directives are those that are promulgated and approved by the city manager. But these are policies that you approve, so these are the city's policies.
Right.
Thanks for your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I think the next item on the agenda is the police department and body cameras. Lisa's favorite subject.
She flew back just for this.
I hope so.
Good evening, mayor and council. We're gonna do this with two of us, since Scott's done the yeoman work of, amount of work in this compared to everybody else. I'm not gonna read every PowerPoint, but Scott put together a PowerPoint on the digital evidence and body-worn camera implementation that we, that's the wrong way. First, an overview of where we're at today with Tulsa Police, or, yeah, Tulsa, Casa Grande Police Department.
This is why I'm here to kick him in the shoulder.
It is. We have no body-worn camera, our, we have a dash camera system that requires manual... manual download and sharing, which means if somebody wants to copy that, somebody has to physically go in, download it, make a disk, and then pass it on. Same thing with our interview cameras in our interview rooms. We also, our digital server right now for the in-car camera is on a server. We're going to go to cloud-based. Sharing digital evidence right now requires us burning DVDs. It requires employee time. Scott will touch on a little point in here with Evidence.com, or Brett's office, County Attorney's Office, and any other agency that has the body-worn camera system that we're bringing in front of you tonight. We'll be able to just, they'll be able to draw that out themselves. We currently have an opt-a-view for our documents. That will be obsolete. We won't be using that anymore. It's more efficient. I'm not going to read all of these, but basically, our proposal, we've came in front of you all before and talked about the, do we get 60, do we get 40, do we implement these at stages? I think across the country, people are finding out, departments are finding out, that if you're going to go in, go all-in, and that's obviously what we have mentioned to council on our previous visits here. We are asking for 95 total body-worn cameras. That's going to cover 84 sworn officers. The additional of the four is what Mr. Range had talked about previously, and Mr. Barber about our four-over, our authorized strength due to the drop. It'll give us five stationary for our community service officers who were, do our prisoner transports, and plus, it'll provide us with six spares. There'll be 97 licenses for access on the Evidence.com, and Lieutenant Servin will get to what Evidence.com is in the next slide, or upcoming slide. But two of those will be for people in records to be able to download evidence and hand them out. A big part of the Axon program is the body camera hardware replacement. You get them replaced at month 30 and month 60, which means that our officers will have the most current, up-to-date things that Axon has available, cameras. There's unlimited storage for body camera footage. If we decide at some point to go away from Axon, we own our data. We don't have to buy it from, back from Axon. There's a big redaction toolset in there that makes it easy to redact, because there'll be a lot of redaction going, because we anticipate quite a bit of inquiries about public records requests for cameras until they find out that really, there's not a whole lot there, until we have a critical incident or something along those lines. It'll be, from the time we get the okay on this, if we get the okay on this, it'll be a two-to-four-month implementation plan from the date that we actually purchase these cameras and the hardware. I think it's one thing that's important is that Scott has staffed a policy amongst our command staff, and we have a policy, a draft policy currently in place that has been sent back and forth amongst our command staff probably three or four times, and reviewed to the point that we're pretty comfortable with that calling, eventually, that draft will, won't require much tweaking to be our final body-worn camera policy. We're making a policy solely on body-worn cameras, too, by the way. We're not going to integrate it with our dash camera or our recording policy, because we figure, once we get these, this will be the one policy that'll come under most scrutiny from the public internally and everything else. There's a quick picture of the latest model, the Axon Body 3. The key features to that is they've really come a long way in the low-light performance, where a lot of our work is at night, so the pictures come up better. The 12-hour, the full-shift battery, the each battery, or each charge will last 12 hours, so that'll extend over if people get on a scene for overtime. They won't have to worry about not being able to film when they need to. It's got a 64-gigabyte memory, very simple to operate, good security system, and it does not take that long to recharge and upload the video from that. The technology assurance plan, I touched on that a little bit already, but it's a five-year warranty on all body camera and docking station hardware, and that includes the spares that we're getting. Anytime we need to return anything for, to be fixed or anything, we don't necessarily need to talk to an individual. We can do that through Evidence.com, contact their rep, we pack it up, we ship it, and it comes back to us. And again, the big point is, all 95 body cameras and 13 docking stations will be replaced at no additional cost at the 30-month and the 60-month mark. And again, this ensures that our people are going to be having the most up-to-date equipment available to them from Axon. I'm going to let Scott talk about Evidence.com for you.
Chief, I just had a question. I've never seen where the, how the body camera goes on to the uniform or whatever. Is there a harness for it, or how does that work to stabilize it?
There's several different mounting options, because officers have different type of vests. Some have their uniform shirts like this and the vest underneath it, and then some have the outer carriers, and there's two different types of outer carriers. Once we implement the program, we're going to actually have to send out the information to all the staff and show them, because I'll be sent the different carrier types, and each officer's going to have to be able to pick the one that they want to choose to carry when they're on duty.
Good. And Dick, we're going to pick where they put them. I mean, we're not going to have one carry them on their belt, one carry them over here. We're going to, as part of our policy, it's going to tell them where these body cameras are, so that way, we have consistent footage on different scenes.
One of the reasons I wanted to present this section is, this is the area that excites me the most about actually Axon's Evidence.com, is because it allows us to be able to put all our audio and video evidence, not just from the body cameras, but if you have an officer that's at a circular K, and they get that footage of somebody coming in the store stealing beer or anything like that, anywhere they go, you can just send them a link, whether it's on their cellphone or their email, and they'll be able to download that video straight into their Evidence.com account. And it's just going to be very useful, like our watch guard cameras right now. You've got to make discs and do things the old-fashioned way. We'll refer to CDs, and at this point in time, lots of officers, Evidence.com, they'll be able to upload the dash cam footage right into the digital evidence. Just go to the next slide, actually, because if you can see all the different uses right here, it's talking about each one. Each one of these uses, they can put into Evidence.com. Matter of fact, when it comes to officers, especially detectives and the records personnel, when they see this and the capabilities that they can show, how it's going to make them much more efficient and take away from our staff time as far as Brett's office having to download any type of evidence for prosecution purposes, and the county attorney's office, they're already familiar with it. If they needs any type of evidence, digital, whatever, they just drop and drag it into the county attorney's portal, and then they look at it immediately. Then we can also share it with other agencies that are using Axon. So this is a real big deal here, where we're actually killing two birds with one stone. We're not only just getting body-worn cameras, but we're getting the evidence storage feature.
Well, and another big plus on the Axon is what it does in our vehicles. It automatically will activate the body-worn camera when the vehicle light bar is on, when our K-9 officers release the K-9 door, and a feature that Scott found really valuable when he came to us, and we all agreed on it, was it has a Bluetooth capability that if I get out of my car and my body-worn camera is not activated, as soon as I get out of the car due to the circumstances or the dynamics that I face, and Scott gets out of his car and his is activated, the Bluetooth automatically turns my recording on. So anybody that's within that area or at that scene, their body-worn camera will automatically be activated if one person's camera is on. So it'll eliminate some of the errors, because we do expect, I'll be honest with you, we do expect it. There's going to, it's something new, and we're going to expect a little, some issues with it initially, but that one piece of what they do, what these cameras do, that's going to help us a lot reduce those errors. We've already talked about the sharing of evidence. Pinell County's attorney's office already has Evidence.com. Brett's office gets a license for it, and any other law enforcement agencies using Axon can receive evidence from us. It's more efficient. We won't have to have some of our records people make the copies and make sure the copies get somewhere, and then what happens to the copies and things like that. So it's a lot more efficient when sharing evidence with prosecution and other agencies. Scott, why don't you talk about this, since you put that together? I'll talk.
Well, I'll go ahead.
Nobody likes to talk about money, but I will say one thing. The price of these body cameras over the years, and we talked about it at our council retreat, has decreased. It's made it more manageable for agencies our size and cities our size to get into the game, so to speak. So with a 95 cameras on a full deployment, the first-year cost for the camera part and the Axon part is $126,385.53, and then you can see the final breakdown year to year with the grand total of a five-year plan being roughly $640,000.
Then the last thing I want to add in there is the, one of the biggest costs associated with it is actually the cloud storage for the evidence itself, and it's not only the body-worn cameras that we're getting, it's the full-featured use that we're going to have of Evidence.com for everybody in the department, not just officers, but our records, clerks, CSOs, our ID techs and such. Everybody will have access to this system.
So Chief, that cost is for everything?
That cost is for the equipment part that we're purchasing. There'll be another slide here that'll talk to additional employee costs, as well as Aaron's additional cost for...
But this cloud, though, this is the storage piece, too, and this is all in that number?
Yes.
Okay, that was what I was asking.
Okay, yes. Additional personnel costs, speaking for Brett's office, they would ask for and require a paralegal position for the city attorney's office to manage the public records request. Like we said, we expect it to be inundated with those, especially right off the bat. Also help with the prosecution-related functions. We'd request an additional public service records clerk position to oversee the program, to work with, I believe, and I'm not speaking out of school for Aaron and their crew, to work with Steve Corral and on IT issues and things that we'll need done to support all the body-worn camera training, the redacting, things along those lines. That's the total yearly cost for those two positions with the EREs rolled in, up and through year five. Mayor, what you said about where I misunderstood you on the additional cost for our network infrastructure, Aaron has laid out the five-year cost for that, and then on the chart on the, or the numbers on the right for additional staff and infrastructure, that's for computer stations, things like that. Eventually, we would hope to, we currently have watch guard in our dash cams, and if you all remember, we did that for economic reasons, plus it's a good product. Eventually, on the new builds, and when those other ones phase out, we would try to get under one umbrella of Axon and try their dash cams as well as the body cams, so everything relates to each other and works together.
Then the last line on the slide, just to speak about the Tyler Technologies that we currently have. Axon does integrate with it. There's several agencies across the country, a majority of agencies across the country utilize Axon, and it will integrate with that system.
So the annual projected cost of this program, that's the totals.
Okay.
That's the five-year yearly totals for this. And before I answer any more questions, I will say, one thing different about this presentation from the other ones that we came before you on, this was a total team effort. We worked very closely with Brett's office. Aaron, Card, and the IT people were right there, giving us guidance and support and put their input in it. So that's why, when I said at our council retreat, I feel pretty comfortable coming to you all with this. This isn't a police department proposal, per se. It's involved three other departments within the city, so we're all on board on this. We all support this. We all think we can manage this, make it work well, and that's why I think this is a little bit, other than the cost being a little bit lower, which everybody likes, that's why I feel a little bit better coming to you all with this proposal than we have in the past.
Chief, can you go back to the total cost page? Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I have a comment more than a question, but I think that one of the things, when people look at these numbers, it does look like a lot, but I think that in the best interest of our community and the officers, we need this. But aside from some of the things you said, Scott, about how we have so many different people within the department happening to do all that work, I think we're going to save some money, and we can't, we can't really put a number on what we're going to save as far as all the different people, you know, in the police department that has to help by manually making copies and all that stuff. So I think that, you know, there's going to be some offset there, but the efficiency of our staff is going to improve greatly with this.
Jeff, you had a question?
Did I understand correctly, the camera only comes on when you're on an active call? It's not constantly running the whole shift?
This camera can't recreate an event, like our, well, it does go back, so I'm, go ahead on that. But let me, it can't recreate an event. Like currently, our dash cams can recreate an event.
Right.
It can go back and create an event that happened an hour ago.
But it's not constantly recording?
No, but go ahead, Scott.
Right now, the way it's set up is, we're probably going to have it maybe 30 to 30, 60 seconds pre-record, you know, so when you turn it on, it'll capture, you know, what happened 30 seconds before. And right now, it has the capabilities of going back two minutes. However, like the chief was saying about watch guard, where it has a ability to be able to draw out something that happened during the shift, that is something that is up and coming with Axon that I do believe will happen before the end of this five-year program's done.
Matt?
Speaking of the five years, it says they replace all of the hardware at month 60. So is that then, we own it and we have to pay for repairs at that point, or?
No.
Or we just keep, it's just included as long as we keep rolling over?
Yeah, as long as we roll over, and that's one of the nice things about it, is that at 30-month, if the Axon 4 comes out, we get that for free. We just get everything upgraded, and it's not just the body-worn cameras, it's also the cradles that come with it. So every, at 30-month and 60-month, we get all new equipment, the whole new equipment at no cost, because we're already paying for it. So you're not only just buying one camera for four, three years, you're actually getting three.
It's not at no cost, but...
Well, you're paying for it upfront.
But we know what that cost is going to be. It's budgeted, and I'm sure this will be in the replacement program. I mean, or however that's going to work, because it's an ongoing cause. And then, like you said, I appreciate what you said about the reactions, because that was one of my biggest fears about all this, is people just making requests, and like, you expect it, but we're not the first community to do this, so I'm sure there's plenty of studies and data how to do that. And also, I think when we have a big incident, like when you see on the news, they usually release the footage to everybody, so you don't have to answer 800, you know, requests for that, right? Is that usually how it works? Like if it's something critical that you know people are going to?
When able to, yes. Depending on the situation, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, stuff that you can release, yeah. And then our drones, I guess, would go in with this, too, with the storage of the data and the footage and...
Axon, Evidence.com will be able to accept the storage data from the drones.
And I mean, I've come a long way personally, too. I think this is a great idea. I never didn't think it was great, but now we finally have the whole system and affordable, and we're at a good place to where we don't have to roll it out in phases. Everybody's going to start at the same time, and it's not going to be haves and have-nots or people that don't want it. But how are the officers feeling about this? Is it pretty positive overall?
Well, and kind of like Scott, Mr. Barber said, we don't go out and poll everybody on stuff like this.
Right. That's our policy now.
But I think that officers, the vast majority of officers, are ready for this, because they, the body cameras originally were pushed out to keep the police clean, I guess you would say.
This protects them, yeah.
But I think officers now, as time goes on, and they see the body cameras, they actually think that that's really something to help them out against false claims and things like that, and you can actually show what happened. Keep in mind that the body camera doesn't catch with everything. That's one thing that people are, I think, believe that's not true. But it is a tool for our officers to protect them. And I think the majority of our officers that we've talked to, and I really haven't talked to anybody, I don't know if Scott has, that was against it, I think they're ready for it. And I think, I think it'll be a good thing for us, honestly.
Lisa?
And just to add to that, I've talked to other agencies, and that is a big concern with every agency pretty much that's ever implemented the body worn cameras. But after they've been implemented, a majority of the officers, they like having them because one, it protects them against false complaints. Two, it helps them to more accurately write reports. And it's, that really helps in their prosecution because now when you roll up on a scene, it's not just you writing a report. If your body camera happens to catch some of it or some of the interviews or whatever happened at that point in time, now you actually have video evidence to be able to submit to the prosecutors.
And real quick, the policy sounds great with the position, you know? You guys have thought that all through? And the unlimited storage, because that was always a big concern too. But that we have the, I mean, we're paying for it, but we don't have to worry about it. So thank you, guys.
Lisa?
And I just wanted to, to thank you guys. I mean, I know, you know, it's something obviously that I've, you know, just discussed and advocated for, for the city. And, and I, I've just seen over the years how much, you know, the times have changed and especially technology with the body cams. I mean, it was years ago, Larry, we had probably at least six years ago when we had our first presentation where they had them on the glasses. I don't know if Scott, if you were there, or Brian, if you were at the presentation, but it was on the, on the glasses here. And so, so of course, you know, it's taken us some time. You know, the, the community has asked why we haven't had them. And, and I think you guys have done a great job showing, you know, the expense because a lot of people think it's just the cost of the body cam. And why can't the city just get them? It's just the cost. But there's so much more involved. And so I'm just so happy to see, you know, the, the different departments coming together. You know, you know, this is going to be great for, you know, not all our community, but, but our, but our officers, the safety and, you know, for the officers and the community. So I'm, I'm just really pleased we're moving forward with this. And I really thank you, you know, Chief. I know you and I've had a lot of discussions on this and, and Larry, and I know your staff has worked really hard to make sure that we are, you know, putting together a very, you know, just detailed and great policy and program. So I'm just really pleased, and I, I look forward to it, especially in today's, you know, climate, you know, with, with what's happening in, in police departments. I just think this protects us and the liability of the city. And I, I'm, I'm just really looking forward to it, and I, I really thank you for, for the, the details that you've provided us.
Bob?
I actually had two questions. Back to the, the five-year equipment costs. Are we getting 95 right up front?
We're going to get 95, then at 30-month, we're going to get another 95. Then at 60-month, we're going to get another 95.
Okay.
And the cradles.
I think I was confused with the repeated cost every five years. Is, is that paying for the ones we already got or?
Well, we showed you the five-year contract. And at the end of this five-year contract, we'll have to come before council, and there'll be negotiations again with Axon, but I don't see it being, you know.
So we're, we're not, we're not paying up front for the full 95. We're, we're contracting to pay a certain amount each year so that we have 95?
Yes.
Okay. And could you, I hate to have you go into a lot of detail, but could, could you run me through a, an average day? An officer has his camera, he goes on routine calls. Camera may or may not have been activated on some of those. Does he download that at the end of the shift or, or what happens?
He can download it anytime, he or she can download it anytime during their shift. But basically, our policy outlines when a camera has to be on. But to put it in a nutshell, in, in a simple way to explain it is, anytime we feel, or an officer feels that they have to take official police action, that camera comes on. Now granted, there'll be times when they'll be able to turn it off if they're developing a CI, just things like that, but that's all spelled out in the policy. But the, you know, the basic part of our policy is anytime you're going to take official police action, that body camera has to be on.
Okay.
So if I see you riding your bicycle and I want to get out and don't talk to you as acquaintances, but talk to you as, what are you doing? It's on.
Okay. And in that case, it would be downloaded? Okay.
Actually, everything that you have is going to be downloaded into the cradle, and it's going to be uploaded to the cloud. So if you turn it on, it's going to, you got to tag it with this, with this event, regardless if you write a report or not. And then according to the state archives, okay, if it's a non-event, 60 days from now, it might get kicked and then it's purged. Or if it's used for a misdemeanor, it could be held for five years. If it's some felony, it could be a hundred years. So to answer your question, yeah, everything's going to be downloaded, and it's going to be important for the officer to tag them, and they'll be purged according to the timelines, according to policy and state law.
All right, thank you. And congratulations on, on this. I, I think fortunately or not, it is just expected nowadays. And I, you know, I can foresee the day, I, I hope it never comes, but where there'll be an incident. And if we don't have these people say, well, why, why don't you have body cams? I think it's becoming more and more the norm that, that agencies have them. So thank you very much and congratulations on it. Glad to see it.
I have, I have a question and a comment. The additional employee that's going to be brought on, what, what basically do they do?
They're going to do everything that's associated with that body worn camera. They're going to help with the redaction, they're going to help with the open records requests. Anything that has to do with the camera. But if you remember, that one thing that hasn't changed from one of our previous presentations is that we're, we're making that position a records clerk position so that if there isn't enough, which I don't anticipate happening, if there isn't enough activity to keep them busy on a body worn camera.
To keep them busy.
Project they'll be doing, they'll be assisting with the regular records clerk's functions.
Well, I just would like to say, I'm really, I've been proud of our police department. I can't believe people that say defund the police. That's the, the most ignorant statement you can make. But I'm very proud of what we have. I think this gives us a step beyond as far as our professionalism and our ability to protect officers and the people that are being, dealing with a police officer, make sure it's good on both ends. But as they say, I, I'm really, I'm really proud of what you guys do, and I thank you.
Donna?
Just a final follow-up question. You, you've mentioned policy a couple of times. When it is ready to roll out, has it been looked at from our city attorney's office just for clarity? Or are you expecting to do that?
Well, we'll, we'll let, on this one, since it's going to touch some of Brett's office at some point, we'll let Brett look at it, but normally Brett doesn't approve our policies.
Okay.
On this one, since it's, goes from between departments, we'll hand, give it to him for certain, him and Mark to make their comments and make some suggestions based on their knowledge and their skill set as far as the prosecution part of things.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further questions. I just have a comment. I just wanted to say thank you to your department. I think you guys are doing a great job. Understand it's $1.5 million of taxpayers' monies, so please take care of it. Make sure it, it gets used properly. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just to, to close the conversation, to give the mayor and council a perspective of the next steps on this particular project. Obviously, this is something that we're adding into our fiscal year '22 budget. So once the mayor and council considers and potentially adopts the tentative budget on June 7th, we will essentially begin to ramp up the necessary procurement components that will have to come back to the mayor and council, which you'll likely see in, in July or August.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we'll stand adjourned for, well, we'll give ourselves five minutes. So we'll start at three minutes after seven.